Okay. Let's call the regular meeting of the Cape Coral Charter School Governing Board to order Tuesday, February 8th, 2022, City of Cape Coral, City Council Chambers. Welcome all. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. If we could stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong.
All right. Thank you. And if we could do our roll call?
Manaya.
Present.
Rodriguez Mian, absent, excused. Campbell.
Present.
Jackson, absent, excused. Mitchell. Russell Tate, District One, absent, excused. Saez. Parent representatives, Hoagland.
Here.
Frank.
Present.
Thank you. And if we could have a motion to approve the minutes?
Some move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And approval to, a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And now we have time for a public comment. It's limited to three minutes per individual, and we have 45 minutes total. Anyone would like to make a comment? We have the podium right here. Public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that we're gonna do?
Our policy requires that the board approve the recommendations made by the superintendent and the principals for hiring. This is just a summary of hirings so far this year.
Okay. Any questions? All right, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great, well, thank you. And now we're ready for the superintendent's report. My goodness.
Good evening, Board. Jackie Collins, Superintendent. I would like to begin my report with a special presentation by one of our Oasis High School students. Our students do some really wonderful things, and this is Trevor Polowski. He has done some wonderful internships at the high school, one with Lee County Mosquito Control, one with the Aviation Unit of the Sheriff's Department. He's got these unique interests in flying, engineering, the Air Force ROTC program, air traffic control, and drones. And he's also working on his pilot's license and hopes to have it before he graduates in May. These internships that he's going to talk to you about today, that he's gotten to experience, have really broadened his goals and his dreams about what he wants to do in the future, and he's just got some great stuff that he wants to share with you. Trevor?
Awesome. Thanks so much. So I have a little slide presentation, my internship experiences. So a little bit about me. I'm a senior at Oasis High School. Been with Oasis for about 11 years now, and I'm interested in aviation. I plan to go to college and eventually join the Air Force. So the internship program, our school offers, it's a year-long program. There's a minimum of two internships, one each semester. It helps build networking skills, communication skills, email etiquette, and allows for the students to be exposed to the career fields that they're interested in. So my first internship of this year was with the Lee County Sheriff's Aviation Unit. It was a really great and awesome experience, one of a kind. I was able to go there once a week for about four hours, and I was there shadowing over what they do and how they operate as a unit. And here's a picture of the helicopter right there. So here's some pictures of my experience there. The very top right picture is us over Fort Myers Beach in the pier. We got a call about a missing lost child on a pink flamingo floaty, so we were sent up and away to go rescue them. But by the time we get out there, she was already recovered by a couple of the other units on the boats out there. Picture of the pilots as they're flying, and a picture of the sunset as we're coming in for a landing. Here's another picture of the helicopter that we're using. They actually have two helicopters. This is just one of them that we're using. I was able to experience pushing the helicopter out of the hangar, putting it back in, did some maintenance on it, cleaning it, and helping with the refuel of the helicopter after each flight. Some more pictures of the helicopter, me inside of it, and the hangar where they're located. My second internship was with the Lee County mosquito in Hyacinth Control District. This experience lasted one day, but it was about eight hours. So in the morning, I was with the Hyacinth Control District. We went out to the field and were experiencing some water cabbage that were getting everywhere all over this lake. So we were sent out there to spray them and get rid of them because they're pretty nasty for the environment. They cause a lot of mosquitoes for breeding in these areas, so we used this pesticide that eliminated only the water cabbage and allowed the environment to be better. Some more pictures of the drone. This is just the drone that the mosquito control district was using. I went with them in the afternoon later on that day, and it was a really cool experience to watch how they operate and fly this drone. Here's the drone taking off in this woods area. It was a small enough area that using a conventional helicopter or an airplane would have been very costly. So, and using conventional stuff like going in with a truck or like a man was just going to be too time-consuming and difficult to get to. So we used a drone in this case, and it was really cool to watch how they operated it and used it. During the process, though, we did get attacked by a couple eagles and hawks, which is kind of funny to watch, but we were able to successfully spray the area and get rid of those mosquitoes, and it was awesome. Forming connections and networking. So through the Lee County Sheriff's Aviation Unit, I was able to form really great connections with all of the guys over there, really great guys. And one in particular is a CFI, a certified flight instructor, and he allowed me to, he helped me, allowing me to get to my private pilot's license, and I'm currently taking courses and studying for that, hoping to achieve that by the end of summer sometime before I head off to college. And this will further my career in aviation because someday I hope to be a commercial pilot once I get out of the Air Force. Thank you so much for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Neil, please.
Yeah, first of all, very impressive. Second, as an Air Force veteran, I'm glad to hear you talking about the Air Force. Paid for my college, so you're doing it the other way around, so good for you. But let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? So how many, were there other interns that were part of the program, or how would you describe the internship program?
There's a lot of other interns. Some interns go with EMS, and they go out in the ambulance. I had another intern that was with me at the Sheriff's Department, and we kind of commuted together, and I'm sure he enjoyed it as well.
Is this more 11th graders and 12th graders, or mostly 12th graders that participate?
It's both mixture of 11th graders and 12th, but you have to have kind of a flexible schedule so you can get to your internship location on time, and you're required to have at least four hours each week.
And was there other activities outside of when you were there? Like, did you have to study some of their policies or manuals or anything like that?
At these locations, no, but some interns require you to maybe dive deeper, and they give you projects to do to give you more interaction with the job and the career that you're interning for.
All great stuff. Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we're doing a lot of very unique things, and we have some wonderful students that are participating in these programs, and Trevor happens to be one. Okay, I'm going to give you a quick, brief presentation of a couple of things that have come up since our last meeting and our last survey report. I'd like to let the board know that I met with, last week, with Dr. Ken Savage, the Superintendent of the Lee County School District, Dr. Manaya. Our city attorney's office was present, and the mayor was also present, and we talked about, is there anything else we could do, Lee County School District, to get a response from you about sharing the half-cent sales tax? What do you want to know from us that will help you make a decision? And what they said really was, they turned the tables around and said, well, what is it that you need? And of course, I have a very long list, and I said, we need the funding. Charter schools are funded, you know, 70 cents to the dollar, like a traditional elementary school, we can't, like a traditional school, we can't raise taxes, we can't do that on our own, we don't have enough capital funding to do the things we want to do. I said, I have carpeting in classrooms that haven't been replaced in 16 years. I have portables that desperately need to be replaced, and I can't do it in a brick-and-mortar fashion. I can only afford to do a modular replacement. I need to replace playground equipment. The needs go on and on and on, I need technology. It isn't really one simple need. And Dr. Savage said, well, that's funny because we have schools that have classrooms that haven't had their carpets replaced in 16 years, and we have hundreds of portables that are old that also need to be replaced. The message was that this funding that they bring in is very important to their sustainability over time. And I asked him if he saw in 2028, when this expires, do you foresee the need to do it again? And he said, absolutely, we cannot survive without this extra income because we all know that educational funding has not kept up with the times, it has not increased at the rate that is sufficient to meet our needs. And then Mayor Gunter said, you know what? What we'd like to do is form a partnership with you. We'd like to share not only our best practices and things that we have in place, but we want to work together to meet the needs of our students and our schools and our community. And Dr. Savage was, you know, very happy to work towards that kind of agreement. He said, that would be wonderful. You are a great charter school system in our community. We want to support you in any way we can. Let us know what you need, and we will start to arrange meetings so that we can get together and share some of the great things that we do. They do reach out to charter schools. They have principal meetings and AP meetings, but we would like to initiate a charter school alliance with the district so that we can all be heard and share what we do well. So it was a productive meeting. I mean, it was, it was good. We'll move forward. You know, Dr. Savage is going to be replaced very shortly with a new superintendent, so hopefully that won't set us back in our conversations, but we will press on and continue to have conversations as far as working together. Okay, on another note, our Clifton Larson Allen audit for 2021 has been complete. It has been uploaded to the Florida Department of Education portal, and the school district, Chris Kessler from Clifton Larson Allen, is going to come to our March meeting on March 8th and give you an overview of that audit report. Okay. I'd also like to give you very quickly a COVID update. After speaking with our nurse, these are our positivity rates for the past month. We started on 1st of January up to the 6th. We've had 60 positive staff cases, 244 student positive cases, for a total of 304 positive cases in about a month and a couple days. We don't really keep track of exposures, well, we do, we have, but exposures, if you are exposed, parents have the opportunity to quarantine or not, and the parents like to have that opportunity to decide. Most of them choose not to quarantine. Some of Melanie's notes are, as of this week so far, we are finally starting to see a decline in cases, but we still have cases daily. For each case, we see an average of one to three other students that become ill and test positive. Symptoms and recovery times seem to be all over the board, but the elementary school students tend to recover the fastest. COVID, we are offering COVID testing for staff and students. They have to sign a waiver. Our school nurse will test them, they'll get an immediate response. It's been a very nice perk. And the DOH is no longer contacting exposed students and staff in schools. I think the numbers have gotten so large they can't keep up, but what they're saying is that the concentration really has been shifted to poverty-stricken communities with lack of health care and also vulnerable populations such as nursing homes. So schools and daycares do not fit into their criteria any longer. We still are to notify the DOH of all positive cases and report them as such. So the positivity rate in Lee County is now at 21%, 18% in the state, and the good news is that we are now on a decline. Okay. Last but not least, I have contacted the city's Public Works Department to do a school, a south campus traffic analysis. I have contacted Engineers Bill Corbett and Kadoura Mahmood, I hope I didn't mispronounce that. We're going to have a meeting on Friday. What we're finding at the south campus is that our enrollment is increasing. We are projected to be at capacity at those three schools come next year. This means over the course of this year and next year, we should have an extra 100 cars on campus on an already very crowded campus. What we're finding is that school start times are very close together, and so we have an overlap of arrivals. We have students arriving at the high school, but we also have OMS staff arriving at the same time. We, and there's a lot of congestion, that's being, that's a part of that. So we have congestion on Oasis Boulevard in throughout the campus. The congestion doesn't allow staff to get to their parking spots because they have to wait in car line to get to their parking spot at the north end of the campus, which is behind the school. It's a lot of commotion and congestion and confusion in the morning, and we're finding that the safety risks are increasing. Since there's so much congestion on Oasis Boulevard, there are parents that don't want to wait in line, so they're dropping off their students, they're letting them get out on Oasis Boulevard in the dark, not where the crosswalk is. They're walking between cars to walk onto campus, and they're going through the parking lot to get to the appropriate school. Parents are dropping off middle school students early, or they're dropping off their high school student through the exit gate at the middle school parking lot and having them walk through traffic. So we're seeing all sorts of issues at all times in the morning because the volume of cars on campus are just too great. And remember, we have high school students that are also driving new students. And we're also seeing problems at the end of the day because car line extends, we have people that are waiting in car line, you know, down 200 cars down Oasis Boulevard, and we have residents complaining. And it's just, it's an overlapping problem that we feel it's time to do another traffic study. So what we've done so far is we have had a discussion, we've met with the principals, the school's security staff, which would be the SROs and the school security guard, Transportation Department, City Parks and Rec Department that do our morning and aftercare program, and now we're going to meet with Public Works. We are going to make a unified recommendation. We weighed pros and cons, and I'm happy to share those with you about changing start times because I think altering, altering start and ending times will help solve our problem since we don't have any extra room to designate more parking spots. And I think we have, we've had our traffic analysis more than one time, we've probably had it three or four times by the city, by the police department, and there's no other way we can see fit to move traffic on campus and out of campus other than what we're doing. So we're going to do another review. We'll make our presentation to the city, the stakeholders, which would be our parents. We should probably have a town hall meeting, and then we can make a formal recommendation to the board as to whether or not we, what our suggestions are to alleviate traffic congestion and safety concerns. So if we were to move charter school start times, what we would do was, we'd conduct the study now, and we'd probably want to make a presentation to all stakeholders this June, and then we would want to put our, our new recommendation for changing start times in place maybe for the 23, 24 school year. Did I say that right, Kathleen? We don't want to throw it out there and say, okay, guess what? In August, two months from now, your middle school student will be starting at 9:30 instead of 7:30. So I think that's the wisest way to go, but I want to see what our engineers have to say about safety on campus in the mornings because that, that could be, that could take priority over timeliness if they say and they see that there is a real, there's quite an issue. I'd like to do some drone footage. I don't know if the city's Public Works Department has a drone, we have drones, but I'd like to, I'd like to have that as part of our presentation to present to you to see where we should be in this safety mix. So that is coming, and I wanted to just present the idea to you because there's a lot more research for us to do before we get to the part where we share it with our community stakeholders and the board. Anybody have any questions about that?
Sounds like an appropriate plan.
Okay, good. Okay. On a much lighter note, the Fight Song has been patented and copyrighted under the Fight Thotler Boys. It can now be played and recorded freely. We're ready to go. And our middle school has just nominated an ITEA STEM School of Excellence Award. They just announced their recipients. ITEA recognizes outstanding schools for their commitment to providing a robust integrative STEM education program. ITEA is a professional organization for technology innovation, design, and engineering educators. Its mission is to promote technical literacy for all by supporting the teaching of technology and promoting professionalism of those engaged in their pursuits. They are having their annual conference in March, 9th through the 12th. Our Director of STEM, Dr. John Omenson, is presenting. He's presenting on breaking down walls in the maker space, which means bringing all subject areas into a physical space like our maker space where they can experiment, problem-solve, do inquiry-based learning, things that we need to be promoting through, you know, our academia everywhere. We are sending six people in person, and we are having four people attend in March. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Questions? Just one on the half-cent sales tax. So I know we weren't exactly sure if the discussion was going to be, did Dr. Savage have a known position on how the board would vote? And to our knowledge, right, they were awaiting more information on pending court cases in Florida, right? There's a number of charter schools in other counties that have some pending lawsuits with those county school districts. Do we have any, we don't have any additional information that we've received, that Dolores has received, right, from their attorney?
That's correct. We don't have any additional information than what we heard on the conference call.
On the conference.
And your summary was pretty accurate.
Okay.
We are waiting for an official word from the board. Dr. Savage was not in a position to give us any guidance on that matter. Officially, that's what we, where we are, we're waiting for the board to determine whether or not they're going to share the proceeds from the half-cent sales tax. We've made a request, and that request is still pending.
And do we know if any other counties have already completed their, their legal issues with charters versus the county school board, like Palm Beach or?
There's been a decision in the Palm Beach case, Dr. Manaya. However, it's not a sales tax issue, it's an ad valorem tax issue. So a lot of the analysis is the same, but there are some differences that may affect the outcome. So depending upon, not wanting to get too far down the road, the next step is to wait. Where we are right now is waiting for the school board to make a determination, yes, no, or maybe.
Okay, very good. Yeah. I think a few months back, we thought that they had already made that general determination that it was no, but now it seems that they're awaiting more, more information from those other suits throughout the state. So that doesn't mean that we have a lot of hope, but it looks like it's still an open issue until we hear more from them. Great. Any questions on the half-cent sales tax? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, our city manager's report.
Good evening, Dr. Manaya, and members of the Governing Board, Connie Behren, Assistant City Manager. I have my charter school team with me here tonight as well. We only have some, a couple of updates that we'd like to pass along to you. I'd like to start with Damon to give you an update on the custodial services as well as the repair on the elevator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Just a couple of updates on some progress on two fronts. First, the Oasis Elementary School, Elementary School elevator repair. As you may recall or have seen, prior to the holidays, I think it was roughly four months ago, we had put that elevator out of service because it was unsafe for use. Over the holidays, we tried to put a temporary patch in on the control board, which was unsuccessful, and we've been communicating, working with Superintendent Collins, but the plan is to do a full modernization of that elevator over spring break, which I believe is the 24th or 25th of March. That's the first week where we have some semblance of an opportunity to go in there and do a full modernization of that elevator without any students or disrupting operations at the school. Any questions on that, or has anybody been approached with anything that we may need to address?
Questions?
Okay. The second is the custodial program. As you may recall, I came up and told you everything's running fine. We did get some feedback from the school members, and again, Superintendent Collins and I are going to be meeting. We're still in that monitoring and adjusting phase. The monitoring, we've been, we did get some feedback from some of the teachers and staff where they'd like to see some adjustments and enhancements to the program. So I think that we're still in good shape. I think it's just a matter of making some... I think it's just a matter of making some adjustments to our day shift and night shift. I think we're doing an excellent job. I think that the level of service that we're providing from a custodial standpoint at the charter school is much better than it was before under our contractual relationship. And I think that as we begin to understand better what the needs are and where we need to put our, our efforts and our focus, that this custodial program is just going to continue to improve. So that's all I have to offer. And I think by next month, we'll probably be reporting again on the custodial, just a few tweaks to it, what we've done and how we think it's going to improve. We're going to be sharing the day-to-day custodial operations with the school board so they can see what each of our custodians are doing at each school and when, and just make sure that it's, it's jiving with the programs that are being offered. Just, you know, a case in point to tell you what I'm talking about. I know that we, you know, mop and vacuum and the floors two or three times, vacuuming every night. But one of the concerns was that in the cafeteria, it doesn't appear like the floors are cleaned. And then we learned, you know, that I think the cleaning's getting done. And then they have the after-school program that comes in where those kids are eating and waiting to be picked up. And then after they leave the next morning, it does look like that it wasn't cleaned. So just getting together and approaching this in a coordinated effort. But I think we're still in really good shape. And I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Questions?
One, thank you. One last thing. We did, I think, made it official this past Saturday on February 5th. Allison Calelo is officially our custodial supervisor. Well deserved. She is unbelievably efficient. She stays on top of her work and we expect really good things from her. So she's going to move into the supervisor role. We both still have the one lead over charter school custodials and then 14 custodians. So in essence, you have 14 custodians, you have a lead, and then you have a supervisor that's over the charter school operations as well as the lead and custodial staff on the city side.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Mark Mason is here too from our finance department. He wants to give you an update. I know at the last meeting, there were some follow-up questions regarding the bus lease proposal that Mark has put forth, and he has some additional information to share with the group tonight.
I think we have a copy of this, right?
Yes.
You received a copy in your package. Yeah.
Also, this shows up under unfinished business, which I think is number 11 or 12 or something on your agenda. Yeah, actually number 14. So I just want to, so when we get there, we don't have to do number 14. All right. Let's see, let's see what I got for you. Well, I had it here somewhere. I don't know where they put it. Well, I'd like to, but there's that one up here that actually does that. So, ah, here it is. Okay, my bad. Okay, Betty, it's not doing it again. Oh, there it is. Okay. So the, to kind of give you an idea, I think that Mr. Sates was talking about last time to kind of get an idea of what the overall cost would be in a comparative basis between buying things and, and leasing things. And as I had mentioned the last time around, as you'll recall, I said our real approach here is to try to create an environment where we have consistently, consistency and reliability of expenses year over year. When you're purchasing things and you're hitting the budget with a large dollar value on one year, and even though you might have smaller values on the next year, when we budget for things, we try to have a consistent approach to budgets year over year. So we have to put aside a million dollars to go buy buses, you know, and you're not even replacing all the buses. That means there's a million dollars you're not putting forward towards something else. And so through the leasing program, I think what we're going to get out of this is a consistent amount to pay annually for the cost of these buses. But at the same time, you would see by replacing these buses, you're going to see a very low cost of maintenance upfront, but it will grow over a period of time. Okay, somebody's going to make it a lot bigger because I didn't do that. Somebody who can use this machine.
There we go.
And so, and so what, so what we've done here is kind of give you an idea if we replace basically the same type of buses year over year. One of the things that we noted is that if we were going to purchase them, we'd actually have to probably purchase an additional bus because of the timing of when we would be replacing future buses. And at the same time, if we're leasing them, we can get away with leasing because we're prepared to go out there and do the next lease a little bit earlier from a, versus a purchase standpoint. So we'll be going before the city council, probably about mid-March as we, as from a, we're going out and doing an RFP for getting a bank involved with the leasing approach, keep the costs down on a tax-exempt basis. And then we would order the buses. And as I told you the last time around, as you recall, building the buses is usually eight to nine months, and then we have delivery. So from a timing standpoint, if everything goes perfectly and everything happens the way we expect it to happen, you would probably have seven buses probably in the January timeframe or thereabouts. So does anybody have any questions beyond this? Yes, sir. You're, you're good? Okay. Everybody else?
Good.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Support's still there for this, right? Okay, good. Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you for the additional information.
If, if everything remains equal for a 25-year period, we would save $3.2 million. And, you know, and of course, that depending on what rates are and a whole host of other things that might happen, this is about where we're at by leasing and keeping your costs consistent year over year.
Predictable.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Predictability is a good thing. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that wraps up our updates for this evening. Again, we do have the team here. We have Angie, Angie Klein from our HR department. I know she's been working with Lisa Orcott to work on some pay ranges with some administrative staff over there, something, bus drivers and things like that, correct?
Right. So they're working on some pay issues with that. Mark Ryanauer is here. He did give you an update the last time on the portables. Nothing has changed. It's still bad news. So they're not getting here any sooner than what we said the last time, but we're continuing to follow through with, through with that.
So I think that's it for our team. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. But we'll be back next month and give you any updates that we have. Michelle's here too from IT. They've been keeping up with everything over at the charter school. She said everything seems to be going well with the technology work that they're doing over there. If you have any questions for her, she's also here to answer any questions. But if not, we'll see you then next month.
And should we have a follow-up discussion on, it sounded like Superintendent Savage requested, do you have specifics, right, of what you're going to be using the funding for? And I think Mrs. Collins has a lot of that. Do we need to get together on, on that point? Or do you, do you think we can handle that via email or?
I would love to have a teams meeting on that because I know I wasn't able to attend the last one because I had a conflict. But I would love to be involved in that. I, I know you, like you said, we'd like to be optimistic. It would be nice that if Lee County would just share the money with us because it's the right thing to do rather than wait for all the other, some other school districts out there to come up with a, a way to do this. But, but you know, we'll be in there. We'll keep fighting for it. And if nothing else, if they do intend to move forward in 2028 and extend it, they will, they will be sharing it with us. And we'd just like for them to do it a little bit ahead of time.
Thank you. And then for amendment 26?
Oh, chapter 26. Yes, we're going to get together on that. Mark, Mark Mason, myself, the city attorney, Mark, the assistant city attorney over there. Still hoping to have that done this month in February. I do need to check too. I had sent a note. I don't know what the status is, and maybe Mark can fill us in on the agreement for the middle school gym that we still have to bring to, to y'all to approve and then also to city council to approve. It's for the use of the gym.
Where, question, where are we?
Yes.
I presume it's in the process.
Okay. Okay, all right. So we'll follow up on that and we, we should have that done by this month as well, if not early next month. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Now we've got the chair's report. We did have a, I don't think we were able to put the photo up, but yeah, maybe we'll just do a quick. So this is the, the actual lease that's being signed. So it's official. It's on paper. It's in the archives. It's in the history books. So, and, and that was such a great collaboration and thanks to so many people in this room that provided the right kind of input to city council to be very comfortable with this kind of a decision. And this is a big step towards our sustainability. It doesn't mean that we're way out of the woods yet, but a very big step in our sustainability. So fantastic. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, I think the other points are just more procedural. We've got these financial forms that each of us needs to fill out. I think there's one for new members that you've got to do within 30 days or so. For current members, we've got till July 1st. Then we have one for exiting members. So that's, that's that. And that comes to us, to each of us via mail, right, to our, to our home address or office address. Okay, great. There's the Florida Charter School Governance Conference that takes place on Saturday, March 26th, 9:00 AM to 4:30. Basically, for those that are on charter school boards as well as administration, great Board member Mitchell and I attended last year as well as Mrs. Collins and Kathleen. And it was very good topics that gave you a better view on how, how, what other issues charters face and how we can become even, you know, better, better board members or administrators. So highly encouraged for you to consider it. It's, it's virtual. We can attend the, the session in Orlando if we'd like, but we attended virtually last year and it was done extremely well. So that's, that's for your consideration for March 26th. And it also follows one of our strategic goals of improving and developing our board members to be even more effective. So we'll get you more information on that as, and I think we, we have to register for that if we're interested, right? Okay, so please let us know if you're interested and we'll, we'll get us all registered for that. And last but not least, I think we have our governing board calendar. So February 28th through April 4th, applications accepted from the business community and community at large for the, the open seats that may be available. We're, we're, we're also able to apply if our seat is terming out, you're able to apply again if that's of interest. March 8th, our regular meeting. March 15th is the Rist Family Foundation at Oasis North for the Makerspace dedication. And then we'll, on April 12th, we'll have the board reorganization, right? So the new board sets up and we, we decide on chair and vice chair and, and continue the process. And then our budget workshop, our first one is April 14th. So a lot happening between now and April. And I think that's it for that report. Any questions? Okay, I think we have staff comments now. So we have Oasis Elementary North report. Principal Brown.
Kevin Brown, Principal Oasis Elementary North.
And Mary Beth Grassack, Principal at Oasis Elementary South. We decided to present together since we're very similar on many things.
So throughout the year and well, since kind of the pandemic started, we, we felt there's a need to add additional socio-emotional learning at our school. We're just kind of seeing some different trends that we needed, we felt needed to be addressed. So this has kind of been our focus really since the fall. So we have at our school, and we have guidance lessons that use a second step. So this is in addition to. So we created a, I don't want to say a club, but a, a group of teachers volunteered their time to meet with 30 students. And these 30 students were targeted, not targeted, but chosen by staff that they might just need a little bit extra help throughout the day. They might have different challenges that are presented, whether it's emotional behavior. And we've set them up with a mentor. So once a week, a teacher, they might be a fifth grade teacher coming down to meet a kindergartner, but they'll come sit with them five, 10 minutes, kind of pick their brain, just see how they're doing, touch base with them, and then they'll kind of both go about their day. So that's been very successful so far. So I really recommend the teachers that stepped up to do that. They are taking time out of their planning just to come meet with those students. We have Wellness Wednesdays. So this is Mrs. Ursidi who works guidance for our school. She has, she comes up with these mini lessons, five to seven minutes that the teachers play throughout the day, their, their web-based, their videos, their little lessons that the teachers touch on maybe during snack. And that's just a reminder of what the students need to, or what, what they can improve on or ways to be better citizens in our school. So that's been very successful as well. And we have this program, it's called Blessings in a Backpack. We actually have a parent who volunteers and donates money to the school. And what this program is, is it provides snacks to students over the weekend for some of our students that might financially have the means to have snacks over the weekend. So we discreetly have these, they come with cereal, chips, like all whole grain, and they come in these little containers and we discreetly put them in their backpacks over the weekend. Over like a long break, like a Thanksgiving break, we might throw three or four of them in there just to make sure that those students have food over the weekend.
And we also have Second Step, but our primary socio-emotional curriculum is called Mind Up, and it focuses on being mindful. They talk about their senses, choosing optimism, being grateful, kindness. It also teaches them about their brain and all the different parts of their brain and how the brain functions. And it kind of helps the kids talk in terms of when they're getting anxious or upset. It gives them the verbiage that they can use to express themselves. And then along with that curriculum, we also do a mindful minute every morning for our announcements. It just varies, it's not even a minute, it's probably 30 seconds, just to help kids start the day by focusing on their breath and taking a moment just to be present and kind of think about their day ahead of them. We also have something similar to the support our students. It's called Care Coach. We identified students, just like the North did, to find students who maybe need just a little extra support in a very informal way. And a lot of our teachers, so if they're in fourth or fifth, their kindergarten or first grade teachers reached out because that's always a really special relationship that they've had with them, to meet with them and encourage them and remind them of different things about themselves that that teacher knows. We also have, our office staff does it, our clinic aide has a care, is a care coach. So we just have a variety of people who aren't necessarily on their grade level or their classroom teacher, but just someone extra to reach out to because we find that the connectivity and just having, knowing that someone beside your teacher cares about you at school seems to be making a really big difference. And then along with the socio-emotional piece, we also think it's really important to increase student engagement. Last year, we weren't able to do quite the normal range of things that we do. And so this year, we're slowly starting to do that again. We've, we had three through five clubs. We're getting ready to start K through two clubs. We have K Kids, which is in, it's with the Kiwanis, and it's a community service club. They've collected food. Right now, I think they're collecting things for the animal shelter. We also have a Student Leadership Club, which does a lot of different, unique things. You can see in the picture here, one of their projects was to do a lending library. So they raised money and they organized it. And so now by the recess field, there's a little lending library that they use. So that's kind of an example of that. little lending library that they use. So that's kind of an example of that. They also did the Fill the Boat with the Cape Coral Police. So just different things like that. And then to spread a wider net, we also have safety patrols. And one thing that's really been kind of cool is fifth grade helpers, which we used to do a few years back. This helps the fifth graders, give them a reason for showing up early to school. They go to the kindergarten, first grade. They help them get on their Chromebooks or read a book or with their writing or whatever they need. And again, just that, that cross-grade level connection, we feel like really makes kids want to come to school and helps give them a different level of purpose for being there.
All right. I kind of brought this up last time I spoke last month. So I, we had two teachers, one in particular, Ashley Tony came up with an idea. So in our, we have on our property, there's a little area. It was kind of run down. We had done it before. And she wanted to kind of build like an outdoor learning center or not outdoor, just outdoor space where students can go outside and they can learn. And she came out of nowhere for, on her own, and came to me and asked if she can do it. So she got a group of volunteers along with Matt Lobbin, and they redid this area. And they mulched it. They, she got picnic tables for free from Lowe's, fence, that little fencing there. And it was a group project for, we probably had, you can kind of see the picture there, about 10 families or so with their students, and they came and mulched it. They actually ripped out a butterfly garden that was overrun that we're going to replant here when it's time to plant coming up. And it's just, it's a really, really neat thing. We've, we've had quite a few teachers actually already come down to get our keys because it's locked and to use that, that space for the students. And it's just a nice little place to go outside, you know, outside the normal classroom. So that's kudos to Matt and Ashley. It's a, it's a really nice place. Oh, sorry. And it's named Krista's Oasis, if you didn't see that piece, which I think is pretty touching considering our formal name and, you know, and regards to Krista McCollough. So it's, it's a nice little touch to that, and they came up with that on their own as well. So pretty neat. We're doing a community outreach. So we, our art teacher, Don Oliver, she got in contact with High Point Senior Living, and we are making Valentine's Day cards for them. And they're actually going to bus over because they are making Valentine's Day cards for us as well. So it's going to kind of be like a drive-through where they're going to drop off their cards. They're just going to kind of wave through the bus. And, but it's, it's a really neat thing. The director there is very excited. The, the residents are very excited about it as well. So it's just a nice little community outreach for our, our school and the living facility.
Okay. And then we just wanted to recognize our OES Lighthouse nominees at my school. It's Jenna Fury, fifth grade teacher, Virginia Tan, first grade teacher, and Jennifer Brown. She's a second grade teacher, all really great teachers who do, they're all three different teaching styles, but they're all really amazing teachers. So we're glad that they're being recognized.
And our nominees are Ashley Tony. I just brought up her name. She's fourth grade. Matt Lobbin, I brought up his name. He's fifth grade. And Joey Valente is in kindergarten. Kind of like, I'll echo what Ms. Gressik said, is phenomenal teachers. We're, you know, just the things they do for our students is amazing. And I'm very happy for them to be nominated. They're not the most outspoken people or want the attention, but it's definitely deserved. So congratulations to them.
Does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Yeah. Well, I think the one comment is, first off, it was interesting this week, was it this? No, it was last week. We were helping a Dartmouth professor improve her PowerPoint presentation. It was just, you know, a very drab presentation. And I sat through the whole workshop, and then I called her, and she's a marketing professor. And so I called her and said, hey, our, our firm does this kind of stuff. Let's give you some good tips on virtual presentation. These slides are great. Your template, you know, the little hand waving and all that stuff? And even Trevor, Trevor's presentation. So this, I mean, it's very professional and it keeps your attention and all that kind of stuff. And the only other point is like two or three years ago, when we had the two elementary schools present, they had completely different formats, right? And as, as board members, it was a little bit hard to follow. There, we were presenting more numbers and stats, but one had, had presented it in one way and another one presented, and both of them, of course, were very valid. It was just hard to relate. The fact that you were presenting together in a, in a, in a way that makes it easy, thank you so much. And yeah, great collaboration.
Yeah. And just kudos to Mary Beth. Like, it's, it's nice. We do a lot of phone calls and just, we try to stay on the same page. You know, we do have families that talk and, you know, and we, we, we think very similar. So, and kudos to her.
And I think that's one thing that sort of has arisen from the pandemic is just that need to collaborate. We've always been wanting to do it, but now it's just, it's just such an important facet to just keeping above water. And so it's really, it's really been beneficial. And we are seeing things kind of converging. And now we're actually working on math book, textbook adoption for next year. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Then we don't have unfinished business. We already took care of. And I think we missed one note that our vice chair was going to speak about the teacher advisory committee. They're not going to meet again until March, so she'll present in, in April to us. And no new business? I don't think we have any new business. Nope. All right. Any final board comments and discussion?
None from me.
Nope. Oh, yes. My apologies.
You're skipping, you're skipping Ms. Hoagland.
Yes, sorry. It was, it was highlighted in yellow and I said, please.
Jennifer Hoagland, Foundation Treasurer. Gary is out of, out of the state on business this evening, so his regrets. We, we did have a very busy month and our months, our months in the future, we're getting into our busy time. So we do have several things that we happily report. Lighthouse obviously comes, we are very excited and we're very happy that we could continue once again with the lighthouse process. And a big congratulations to all, of course, all our teachers are absolutely amazing. We wish we could do it for everyone. Special thank you to everyone who was chosen. And we are very excited to get with the observations and to progress. And then for our lighthouse banquet coming in March.
Where is the specific date?
It is Sunday, March the 6th. And then invitations and things will be coming out as it gets a little bit closer. We did do more Feel the Love packages, baskets, along with our nurse, Melanie, for any staff that was in need due to some COVID or not feeling well. So we continue to, to do that and send some love to our teachers and staff members. Our scholarship process is also just begun. We got the final applications out to OHS. So we are offering this year, in addition to our regular two and four-year college scholarship application, we are also implementing this year a trade and vocational school application process. So we will be awarding scholarships on both sides this year. So that's a wonderful addition that we, that we're going to be doing. The go live for the applications is going to be on the 10th, February 10th, which is just two days from now. And we'll go through March 31st. So for all of those high school seniors, if you would like to apply, the scholarship applications are going to be on the website as well as through our capecharterfoundation.com website. Please apply. We are working through, getting ready for our, our big rally, our golf tournament. We are also implementing this year, I think Gary mentioned it last time, we are having a family fun event this year. We're bringing back a little different. We're going to have a mini golf event the night before the rally. So information will be coming out shortly regarding that. And we are getting our forms together for sponsorships. So information will be coming out online and, and being posted on our Facebook sites and through all the schools for any sponsorships, donations, and all the information about the adult and teen golf tournament, nine hole, 18 hole, that we've had the past couple of years, and then the family fun night the night before at the Tropical Breeze Fun Park on Santa Barbara on April the 8th. And we happily made some awards too. We opened up our grants back in December and early January to some sports and clubs for all of our schools. And we were able to, to award some wonderful things out there. So for OES, we provided some equipment for their run club that they started, as well as they implemented a cheer club. So we gave some pom poms to the cheerleaders for the OES cheer club. OHS is going to get a new camera for their photography and their yearbook program. OHS football, we're going to help give them some money to help recondition some of the helmets. That is a major safety concern and something that does need to be done every three years, I believe. So we're happy that we'll be able to help them get, get some of their helmets reconditioned for safety. And at OMS, we are going to be providing some uniforms and equipment for some of their intramural sports. And then, of course, our regular grant process is still open for educational needs. That's always open. We started that for the second semester. So if any teachers, staff have any educational needs, please go to our website and, and put in your grant application for that for the second semester.
Great. Wow.
Yeah, lots of fun stuff.
Fantastic. Thank you. Though we look forward to participating in the board if, if you have time, you know, please see which of those events you can attend. And now, now the mayor has a scholarship event each year, right? Is, can we get dates on that? Is that, if we can get invites or dates on that, that would be good to support as much as?
As soon as I find out what they are, I'll share them.
As much as the city's supporting us. And then the only other question that came, any other comments from, okay, was in, in, in the news recently for Lee County, you're, you're hearing about, you know, the, the great resignation issue and how, how teachers are within Lee County School District, there's, there's a big issue. Are we, are we seeing, are you seeing that kind of a issue? Do you want to share like what context is there?
I'm not really prepared to discuss it, but we, yes, we are seeing an exodus of, I wouldn't, I shouldn't say exodus. There are teachers that are leaving, and they typically are either leaving the profession or they're going to another opportunity like a virtual platform. It's, it's very overwhelming this year. It has been for the last several years because we've had the pandemic, because we, students have a lot more needs, social emotional needs. And people are worried about getting sick. There are a lot of, yes. So long story short, yes, we are seeing teachers that are leaving mid-year, which is unusual. So that is a, it is a concern. And the real concern is that there aren't many applicants that are applying to replace them. So, and we've investigated a variety of platforms where we can advertise. And they're, you know, they're not all for free. We have NeoGov, which is free, but not everybody knows to look there because it's on the city website or on our website. So we go to Indeed, we go to EdWeekly. We investigated LinkedIn, but there's always a pretty hefty price tag, and we have multiple positions that are, need to be posted. So yeah, it's, it's a struggle this year.
And would you, do you have numbers? Like how many are we looking at or?
I, I don't off the top of my head, but I can come prepared next time and give you an idea.
Probably something we could put on the agenda.
For the next time? Okay, great. All right. Well, any other comments? Any other comments? Mrs. Collins?
No.
All right. With that, we can, we can adjourn.